We are now recording.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the second edition of this year's Public Hearing on Procedures for Discipline, Attorney Competency, and Admissions. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and I don't think we have to take role. But I would like to call on the members of the Board of Trustees, who are here to introduce themselves and just give the public just an insight into who your appointing authority is and what you do in your day job. So I'm just going to start with Vice Chair Sisneros.
Thank you, Brandon. Jose Sisneros, San Francisco Treasurer, is my day job, appointed by the Governor as a public member. And I'll pass it to Mark Tony.
Thank you. I am Mark Tony. I was appointed by the Governor as a public member. And my day job is I serve as Executive Director of TURN, the Utility Reform Network.
All right, thank you. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Going to pass it along to Ray.
Thank you, Mark. My name is Ray Buena Ventura. I was appointed by the California State Supreme Court. And my day job is I'm the public defender of Lake County.
Pass it on to Gennaro.
Hi, my name is Gennaro Trejo, and I was appointed by former Assembly Speaker Anthony Rendon. And I am a private equity investor and nonprofit executive. And I will... Someone want to volunteer? Is there anyone left?
Going to have Leah. If we could have staff introduce themselves now?
Sure. Leah Wilson, Executive Director.
Good morning, Eileen Dafte and General.
Good morning, Luisa Repetian, Board Secretary.
Morning, Alfredo Hernandez, Senior Program Analyst.
All right, and my name is Brandon Stallings, Chair, appointed by the Supreme Court and Deputy District Attorney during the day. All right, we are going to make a call for public comments. We are going to call on members of the public who have signed up ahead of time. So we appreciate you signing up, giving us an idea of how many individuals wish to comment this morning. We are going to call on those members in order that they appear in the attendee pool. For those of you who are participating via Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It is a hand icon and should appear at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the committee, please click on the hand icon now, and State Bar staff will call on you in the order that hands are raised. For those of you who are participating via phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. That is the star key, the number nine. Again, doing so will alert staff that you'd like to make a comment. And State Bar staff will call on you and open your microphone so that you can address the board. Due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than five minutes. That is five minutes for each speaker. Please note that staff will have an on-screen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer's five-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The on-screen timer will flash throughout the final 10 seconds. All right, so I'm going to turn this next portion over to Luisa. And I believe that we have our first speaker, and that is Mr. Michael Sternberg.
This is Sternberg. You should have the mic. If you unmute yourself, we'll be able to hear you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
We can. Good morning.
Morning. So thank you again for having me. As the bar knows, my name is Michael Sternberg. I run the YouTube channel at Father in Exile. I've been coming to board meetings for over a year to discuss the abduction of my children from Las Vegas, Nevada, and corruption going on at the California Bar, as well as in the California judiciary, and the California Bar's absolute refusal to do anything that it's supposed to do within the disciplinary system. Today is likely to be my last meeting. I've always known I've been talking to a brick wall. This last weekend, I discovered just how bad it really is. And the fact that regardless of the motivations and desires of this board, there essentially is no hope at the bar. I'm referring to the way that you guys spend money and the way that you refuse to exercise oversight over OCTC. So OCTC, which is the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel, routinely and regularly does fake investigations. They don't verify facts. They have a pattern and practice of closing out investigations after refusing to investigate. I've reported all this to the board, and as far as I know, the board has done nothing about it. This last weekend, I started going through the data that's listed by the bar in the 2023 Annual Discipline Report. And what I discovered was kind of shocking. Now, the data and that report goes all the way back to 2019, which coincidentally is the date or the year that my children were abducted. Back then, the annual cost of the discipline system, according to the bar, and again, I'm taking your own data at face value, although I did see some inconsistencies. The annual cost was seventy-two and a half million dollars. In 2023, that has ballooned to one hundred and four million dollars. Total cases incoming in 2019 were sixteen thousand five forty-one, and 2023, it's fifteen thousand four hundred and fourteen. Every year since 2019, OCTC has closed out more than seventy-five percent of cases without action. That is, I would argue, a statistical improbability that you couldn't find discipline. You couldn't find misconduct that warrants discipline in more cases than that. In 2019, the cost per case of discipline was one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That's more than doubled in 2023 to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, almost three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Back in 2019, you disbarred one hundred and nineteen attorneys, and it costs you six hundred and eight thousand dollars to do that. In 2023, and I should mention, the number of disbarments has gone down every single year since 2019. In 2023, you disbarred seventy-six attorneys, and that costs you one point four million dollars to do that. So that represents point zero four percent of the population of attorneys in California, licensed attorneys. If you guys wanted to get serious about actual discipline, you would need billions of dollars, and we all know that that's not going to happen. So the bar is totally defunct. You're just wasting everybody's time. It's kind of an amazing boondoggle. Chair Tony, last meeting like this, we had several ladies come on and report to you complaints about corrupt attorneys in Orange County. You argued that they should file complaints. I think the data I've just gone over shows that the bar is not serious about investigating complaints. I would also tell you, Chair Tony, that you have a type of investigation called the State Bar Initiated Investigation. Has this board ever requested that the State Bar initiate an investigation? These are people that are supposed to be monitoring the press, monitoring the public sphere, and finding evidence of misconduct. I've been on here reporting criminal conduct and misconduct for over a year. And I bet if I could get access to the records that are not hidden behind confidentiality, it would show that you guys are doing nothing. I wonder how much money you're wasting on this John Eastman affair. I last checked, when I last checked, I'm not even certain that he's been accused of doing anything in the state of California. I would highly encourage journalists to look into the data that I just reported. You can get the 2023 Annual Discipline Report on my YouTube channel at Father in Exile. I'd also point out, we have two district attorneys on here that have a direct line of communication, I'm sure, with the FBI and the State AG. I wonder if they've done anything. Lastly, I'll just say, Sherry the Shredder, I filed a complaint against her. The State Bar is so inept and corrupt that when I requested fee arbitration at the State Bar, the local bar CEO, Sherry the Shredder of Santa Clara County Bar, admitted to shredding my local 3B complaints about bias and misconduct at the Santa Clara County Court. Your assistant arbitrator, Lee Strauss, is so inept and incompetent, and the culture is so bad that Lee Strauss denied my request for fee arbitration, not even realizing what a big deal that admission was. I can see I'm out of time. I'll leave it there. This will be my last.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sternberg, for your comments.
Next on our list is somebody calling in with phone number two four two three. However, I do not see this person in attendance. Third speaker is also calling in with phone number three seven five four. However, they are also not in attendance. Fourth speaker is Jody Sussman. May I do see Jody Sussman? We'll enable your mic. You'll have five minutes.
Hello, this is Jody Sussman. I have filed a very extensive bar complaint against attorneys Eric Becker, Samantha Morris Jones, and David Schaber. The case number is twenty-three dash oh dash one nine zero one three, twenty-three dash oh dash one nine zero one four, and twenty-three dash oh dash one nine zero one five. I've also sent you in an email, Ms. Luisa, the judge's statement of decision. He took extreme care in writing a seventy-one-page statement of decision against these corrupt attorneys. And they did not like the outcome of their fees being reduced, especially the guardian at Lydum, whose fees went from forty-four thousand close to eight thousand. We are desperate, and we don't mean to beat you guys up, but we have done the right ways of, you know, exposing the truth in the courts, then filing complaints. And we are the ones that get attacked by these corrupt attorneys. They say I'm delusional and I'm out of my mind and that all kinds of bad disparaging things against me. But worse yet, they said it against my mother, claiming she had dementia. Her business affairs were in disarray, and she was about to lose everything. They repeated that lie for close to five years. My mom's financial situation was not in disarray, and they knew it. They were served from the bankruptcy courts those documents that proved they continued to lie in probate court about that. We really would like, if you have any authority, to look into these cases. These attorneys feel that they are so above the law, the laws of Eric Becker. I know of a case in 2009 where they accused this family of not caring for their ninety-year-old mother. They stripped that mother from her home, where she had lived with her son for twenty years. And that poor woman was dead in three months. And every last dime of that family, she was an elderly black woman who had four rental properties. And she amassed wealth. She died in isolation, medicated, and for no cause. She had absolutely no health problems before that. These people have gotten away with this for so long, they think nothing will ever happen. And part of that is because complaints to the State Bar are ignored. Please, I pray, if you have any power, do something about these people. I thank you all. God bless you all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Sussman.
Next, we have Faraz Rahimi.
Good morning. This is Faraz Rahimi, and to follow up on my prior comments, which I made in your November meeting, I would very much like to bring it to the committee's attention again, the importance that this committee holds to reflect the victims like me and Ms. Jody Sussman, the presenter prior to me. Voices to the ABA Board and the importance that the ABA Board responsibilities are to protect the public from these corrupted attorneys and not to ignore the victims like us. Our pleadings, our complaints, our court documents, anything is going to be ignored by ABA. That maybe that in hope that eventually we are going to get tired, we get old, which we are old, die or go away. We are here. We are standing strong, and we are not going away. And it was very disturbing that Mr. Sternberg said that his, that's his last comment, and he already gave up. We are not. Still, me and Ms. Jody Sussman, we have not. And also to hold these corrupted and unethical attorneys accountable enough so it could be a lesson for the other corrupted attorneys to think twice when engaging or thinking about engaging in these sort of horrible unethical and malicious practices. And specifically, to hold these corrupted and corrupt probate attorneys, which are representing a very organized criminal fiduciary company called Professional Fiduciary Services in Orange County, also known as fiduciary probate mafia of Orange County, which is all over the internet. Please Google it, which runs by two licensed fiduciaries by the name of Mr. Peter Coté and his partner, Mr. Richard Huntington. These two gentlemen come with their own set of mafia attorney groups in answer to Mr. Tony's last question, last month's questions. They come with their own set of mafia attorney groups. Actually, it was a question for Madam Secretary. And the most known and corrupted ones aiding and abetting these two fiduciaries are Attorney Eric Becker, Attorney Samantha Jones, Attorney David Schaber, and Attorney Steve Joe Michael, and Attorney Illyon Aljihad. The first three, Attorney Eric Becker, Samantha Jones, and David Schaber, has been maliciously aiding Richard Huntington to take down millions. I'm not talking about hundred thousand dollars. I'm talking about millions of dollars of Ms. Jody Sussman's case. And Steve Joe Michaels and Illyon Aljihad are aiming and abetting the same fiduciary, Mr. Richard Huntington, to take down millions of dollars in my case, Fair Trust. These are all facts. These are all court documents, and it's nothing that we are making up. We have documents, and I hope that the committee has watched the videos that it's been sent by Ms. Jody Sussman, that it's not just us, it's dozen of us, that we are being, you know, abused by this people. Without these attorneys, these fiduciaries are powerless. The interesting and disturbing part is that these fiduciaries spare no cost spending our trust money, our inheritance money, to maliciously fight against us beneficiary once we become aware of their dirty hands. I hope the committee have had a chance to watch the video that was sent by Ms. Jody Sussman prior and understand what we as victims of these two fiduciaries and their attorneys are going through. Please, please, look into this matter and act upon. Thank you.
I think you, Ms. Rahimi.
Next, we have our sixth speaker, Public Parents. May I do see Public Parents? Your mic has been enabled. If you unmute yourself, you'll have five minutes.
Hello. Hi. How is everyone doing this morning? I am a member of coalition of thousands of parents whose children were separated. They were taken in 2016 under WIC 300B, unable to provide regular care, and were never returned. There wasn't a shred of evidence to prove this perjury. And like our coalition letter stated, I sent to you guys, the letter stated, social workers was not cross-examined at any of our hearings. This has been going on since 2016. I can confirm and testify the public funds by CLC, which is Children's Law Center and Los Angeles Dependency Lawyers, for over eight years. The Children's Law Centers who represented my children and the Los Angeles Dependency Lawyers who represented me never cross-examined the social workers, and I never waived my rights to cross-examine the social workers. And the very beginning of my case in 2016, I asked a lawyer if I could put up a defense. He told me to shut the fuck up and take the fucking classes. CEO Dennis Mill told me in 2021 on the phone that I had no rights to cross-examine the social worker, that it was up to the lawyers. According to all the parents in our vast network, no one has been allowed to cross-examine the social workers. I asked for monthly invoices that Children's Law Center and Los Angeles Dependency Lawyers submit to the ALC on my case, which is over a hundred and sixty, and was told there are no invoices. This is a cover-up. I had a baby in 2022. I gave birth to a beautiful baby boy. The social worker did not detain him because she said I am able to provide regular care, but stated at the same time that I was unable to provide regular care to my twelve- and fifteen-year-old children. They have been in placement for eight years. My daughter started cutting her arms, body piercing, smoking marijuana. Commissioner Marpet terminated reunification, ordered guardianship that failed, ordered my children to be placed with their fathers, kept the case open. My daughter, she has been destroyed all because of these Children's Law Center lawyers and these dependency lawyers. My daughter is forever changed. She wants to be a porn star created by Ladel. I am fighting tirelessly for my children for years. I filed WIC 388 petition based on ineffective assistance of counsel, denounced due process by Children's Law Center and Ladel. That was denied. I reported the Commissioner Marpet to judicial misconduct to the presiding judge. That was denied. I reported the CLC and Ladel attorneys to the State Bar based on ineffective assistance of counsel and denial of due process. I received no response for four months. The CAP panel refuses to file an appeal based on ineffective assistance of counsel and denial of due process by Children's Law Center and Los Angeles Dependency Court, I mean lawyers. The entire court system is corrupt. Me and a thousand of parents are losing our children because of these attorneys are not following the law, not advising us of our rights, not cross-examining the social worker. We're not able to put up a defense. We're not able to put up evidence. We just have to stand there and shut up and get our kids taken. This is a mass separation going on. This is a humanitarian crisis. And we want our children, and we will not stop, and we will not shut up. These children's law center in Los Angeles Dependency Lawyer needs to be investigated. Their funds need to be taken away from them because every day in dependency court, they are lying. They are railroading parents and taking our children and drugging our children. My daughter is pregnant by a six, she's pregnant by a twenty-one-year-old man, and she is sixteen years old. Her attorney is not reporting it. I've reached out to many people. The police, no one cares. So I hope that you people care and really, really investigate and think about what are you guys doing with these funds? Because nobody has a right in dependency court. Our attorneys are not advising us of our rights. Thank you so much, and you guys have a great day, and I hope that you guys investigate and shut down these contracts with these attorneys and actually do the job and protect our rights and our children. Our children are dying out here.
Thank you for that, for that public comment.
Luisa? Next, we have Reverend Frank.
Good morning, everybody. I hope your Thanksgiving was as fun as mine. And Leah, again, I don't know if you got my email yesterday. Thank you so much. I contacted my hosting company and found out their prices were going up. I have re-contracted with a company over in Lithuania a hell of a lot cheaper. In fact, the refunds I'm getting from my current company, they're going to pay for the next two years. So you're going to save me a ton of money doing that. And for those of you that are confused, three years ago or so, I filed the State Bar complaint against Vanessa Holton. She turned around and went to the San Rafael Police Department and filed a completely bogus report. You can check the website. It doesn't have anything to do with her. It has to do with your own guy, Steve Mazar, who actually did a whole bunch of harassment on Vanessa. That's all on the VanessaHolton.com website. But again, Leah, leahtwilson.com. You guys got to see the new stuff I put up there. And Leah, since they don't mind adult content, I've got all of my stories up and available for people to read right now, leahtwilson.com. So you guys have made me a hell of a good Thanksgiving and Christmas present, Leah. So are you ever going to investigate Vanessa? Are you going to sit there and just keep ignoring it? Do you want to comment? You're going to sit there and just look crazy and look silly? Huh? I can't tell. Leah, are you going to answer me? Or are you going to just ignore me? The public is waiting for you to do your job and investigate Vanessa Holton. But I can't understand. Can you explain why you don't want to investigate a criminal conduct by your own employee? Isn't that what your job is? Oh, yeah, we forgot. You quit. And but when you quit, you needed a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of the State Bar funds to keep your head afloat in water? Forty-eight thousand hidden beneath something with a waiver from the bar because of, you know, you just needed to be here with a transition contract, and then you failed outside. You had to come crawling back to the bar? My question, Leah, is any of that hundred and forty thousand, did that go to helping secure your return to the bar? Did that go for bribe money, or was that just your own need for daily living? Because I know families that can live on less than half of that. So it sounds like you got really greedy while you were gone to take as much money out of the State Bar's coffers as you could, money that could have gone to taking care of other complaints that these people are doing. And then you get yourself a pay raise when you hire Ellen, and then you jack her pay rate up, Ellen? Yeah, you're seeing there. You're going to be on my site too, my dear. You'll check out the stuff on the line. It's going to be fun. AI people, we can take pictures and make them dance and sing and laugh. And I'm going to have fun over the Christmas vacation doing just that for you guys. Now, Leah, will you care to comment? Will you start investigating Vanessa Holton? Or am I going to have to maybe file a complete report? File a federal lawsuit? Who knows? Maybe Mayor Kate's not going to be too appreciative of the writings I do and the insinuations of corruption of her police department based on Vanessa Holton screwing up, and she filed a police report as the General Counsel of the State Bar of California. Then they had to have them black it out. I mean, when do people ever blackout a police complaint after it's been filed? That takes real guts. I don't know. Did it destroy Jimmy's record? Did it destroy, you know, Officer Bellamy? Is that why he's not there no more? You know, your moral corruption goes down to the deepest, darkest, doesn't it? People look at the police report and go, oh, gee, I guess our department is corrupt if we're going to blackout a report and not do an investigation. Come on, listen to the phone calls. I mean, how stupid can you be to threaten me using Vanessa's name, but you guys never gave me the real Freedom of Information Act? And that's what we're going to go to court on next year, Leah. You and I are going to be staring eye to eye when those emails come out and we expose how corrupt you guys really are. These extemporaneous emails are going to expose every one of you for being the pathetic, lying. I don't know if I want to go any deeper than that, but you guys have a Merry Christmas. And come January first, bada bing bada boom, Leah, you and I are going to be starting to tangle. They're coming to take me away. Ha ha, hee hee, ho ho. Leah, does that sound like fun? Which one of us is going to be looking better in an orange jumpsuit? Can you tell me? Can you tell me? Why don't you do something about the corruption inside your own organization, Leah? Shame, shame, shame. Ellen, good luck to you. I'll talk to you soon. Five, four, three, two, one. Bye-bye.
All right. Thank you.
Next, we have Susan Bassi.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Susan Bassi, and in 2015, I filed my first complaint with the State Bar ever in my life. I didn't even know what the State Bar was or how it operated. And I filed a complaint against Nat Hales, a private judge in Santa Clara County. The State Bar then took over a year to investigate that complaint. And for issues that were clearly and proven with documentary evidence related to bribery, related to corruption in the private judging, gave Nat Hales a confidential discipline. And at the time, the judge assigned to the case was Judge James Towery, former chief trial counsel of the State Bar. I didn't know the significance of that at the time that he presided over my divorce case. He issued orders to have my community property pay jams. And the pull into private judging began with James Towery. And the State Bar has known this and has allowed jams to become too much of an influence and a privatization of our courts. And they have done so because it becomes an incentive for public court judges, and it is the basis of the corruption in our state. In 2016, the State Bar became subject to the California Public In two thousand and sixteen, the state bar became subject to the California Public Records Act and I did my first records request related to James Towery's pre-employment history at the state bar. I did a second records request on August fifth, twenty seventeen. And when the state bar produced those records, Suzanne Grant and the whole lot of them, including Vanessa Holton overseeing all of it, produced the social security number and the home address of James Towery. I was then, I then delivered those records to the California Publishers Association where we were working on a public records project. And the state bar contacted me and asked me to sign an affidavit that I had not distributed the records. They knew the affidavit that they typed was false. It was an entrapment. And if I had not been a little more sophisticated at that point, I might have signed an affidavit that would have put me in prison because the state bar set me up to do that. In two thousand and seventeen, I discovered that Vanessa Holton and James Towery had a series of email communications while he presided over my personal divorce case and I was doing my work as an investigative reporter. I had formal training and experience with investigative reporters and editors, which included working with reporters from the New York Times, the Washington Post, the LA Times, and all of the other mainstream news organizations. I have the skills and the training to read records at the state bar unlike any other reporter in the state. I then found emails in twenty twenty-two between Vanessa Holton and James Towery. James Towery in those emails called me mul- dangerous on multiple levels and nothing was done when the state bar got that information. I have the cryptocurrency accounts of James Towery and know that it is connected to Steve Mazer. I have gotten the public records related to all the prosecutions and the arbitration with jams involving Joe Dunn and the whistleblower complaint. I am aware that Vanessa Holton signed off a waiver of objection to the arbitrator from jams having an association in the family, which is an organization that prohibits women to be members. So a female member of the state bar, the general counsel, waived a conflict of interest involving women as the state bar says that it's going to give equal protection for all of its members, which include women. In two thousand and seventeen, I got all of those records related to the arbitration with Joe Dunn. The amount of money that was spent and given to jams for that arbitration and conceal what was going on at the state bar is disgusting. The redactions that the state bar agreed not to redact for the LA Times would have implicated James Towery and you continued to cover it up and protect a man who was in your office of chief trial counsel and the original person who protected Thomas Giardi. In two thousand and ten, shortly before James Towery went to work for the bar, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, Ninth Circuit, referred to Thomas Giardi in the Dole Food Company case. That case was then assigned to the Office of Chief Trial Counsel where James Towery recused himself. But before he recused himself, he appointed a special prosecutor. I'm unaware of the law that allows someone to recuse and then appoint the special prosecutor who was gonna investigate, Thomas Giardi. You missed the boat there. You allowed it to happen. And for the next twen- ten years, Tom Layton and everybody at the state bar became the wolf of Wall Street for our legal profession. And you knew it. You allowed it to happen and you have continued to protect James Towery. What I did not know until twenty twenty-two was that the state bar attorneys and James Towery had been carving out a little secret meeting, the Bar Bench Media Police Committee in Santa Clara County, where they invited judges, lawyers, police officers, and only reporters from the Santa Z Mercury and NBC News. And those reporters decided what would get published and what would not. They rigged headlines and it is the most unethical thing I've ever seen in journalism. And my colleagues at the Santa Z Mercury were sitting on that committee with James Towery, emailing with his wife and deciding what was going to go on in those meetings where there were no records kept, but where they used the money from the general funds of the court related to juries. Lisa Herrick is general counsel of the court. She was involved in that Bar Bench Media Police Committee as a private attorney and as a government attorney. All of the attorneys in Santa Clara County were involved in going at the highest level, James Williams, Jeff Rosen, Jay Borsky, James Gibbons Shapiro, all of them. And when James Towery went to the state bar in twenty twenty, in twenty ten, he protected all of the prosecutorial misconduct of that office that was revealed in the Santa Z Mercury's original tainted trials tarnish stolen justice series. We've been reporting-
Your five minutes is up, so I would just ask that you uh complete your comments, please.
Think we may have lost Ms. Bassi. Next we have, oh, I see Ms. Bassi.
All right, Ms. Bassi, I see you've returned, so your five minutes are up. If you just wrap your comments up, please.
I would like to talk about Sherri Diamond. Sherri Diamond is the attorney in the Santa Clara County Bar Association. She sent an email about my work that is defamatory, false, and completely evidence of corruption to Erica Elizabeth Lu, who manages the arbitration for the state bar. And in that email, she admits to destroying an official document. That is the crime that currently former President Trump is being prosecuted for. The state bar has done nothing about that email since October of twenty twenty-three. And last Friday, Sherri Diamond was managing the local holiday party for the attorneys in Santa Clara County that are mainly family law section attorneys. And she was the gatekeeper and I watched that woman record victims of the Women SV Runner and Capper scam with Hoover Karpalka. What Sherri Diamond is being allowed to do because the state bar will not investigate her and because Elizabeth Lu did not report what was in that email is repulsive. And if you will not investigate somebody who admits to destroying an official document, then there is no purpose in having the state bar do anything and it should be defunded. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Next we have Benjamin Cone.
Hello, thank you. I wanted to uh highlight some questions that I think you should be asking yourselves about the reasoning for omissions from the testing accommodation rule revision that was approved and uh use that reasoning for starting on a supplemental rules revision or uh amending the one that you already ha- planned to file. The first uh question is uh to ask wha- how the degree of staff burden sparing from auto approving certain high stakes approvals measured over two exam cycles following the amendments coming into effect is relevant to the merits of the two week initial decision timeline on accommodation requests? If your timelines can't provide disabled applicants equal opportunity to do competitive bar prep or allow sufficient time for appeals, shouldn't that be fixed even if the other uh amendments don't allow you to do that without expanding staff capacity? So why is the information about whether you need to expand staff capacity to do that helpful? Second, uh the how early would applicants need to request accommodations to be guaranteed or at least expect a decision at least thirty days before the exam timely filing deadline and so get thirty days to appeal instead of fourteen days to appeal under the tiered deadline plan in the current rules revision proposal? And how would immediate repeaters seeking to petition for new accommodations be able to do that? I'll answer that and say that it's facially impossible. Uh third, don't uh don't you already provide CBE subcommittee hearings to applicants at risk of being denied moral character determinations? So why can't you provide something similar for applicants appealing accommodation denials that you can't grant on the papers uh as a commenters like Assemblyman Berman requested? I suggest that there be this be taken up as soon as the January meeting for purposes of circulating for public comment so that in not waiting to exam cycles. And then the next uh point that I would like to make is that the next meeting will be deciding the practices for the July twenty twenty-four or after bar exam in terms of remote testing and there has not been a CBE recommendation on that made, uh which seems to be a difference in practice. Uh I think that given that the staff uh in intend to recommend or at least according to the November presentation, they intended to recommend that the July twenty twenty-four exam not be the start of any new system, at least other than a pilot. Uh that uh maybe the January meeting is a board meeting is a little bit too soon. And if you're not gonna have the CBE weigh in to give opportunities to give public comment on a specific proposal before the January meeting where you're going to take action that uh you should, with all the fact finding data that wasn't available at the time of the November three forum, that you should then uh have a proposal circulated from the January meeting if you're not going to start in July and actually take action at a subsequent meeting. Those are all the comments I have for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cone, for your comments.
Next we have Chris Black.
Hello, uh can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Brandon Stallings, um I, you know, I'm very concerned here. I mean, based upon your occupation, I I allege that you should be looking into the the crimes that people are reporting, um at least um, you know, reference to local jurisdictions that could actually do something. Um credible um you know, information has been given as it relates to criminal activity here. Um I know that the state bar has a long and sordid history and really is nothing more than a criminal racketeering enterprise and I think that the state bar should be just shut down at this point or perhaps placed into a federal receivership. Uh perhaps certain functions outsourced to private companies that could actually be managed and are just not one giant cancerous tumor. Um the state bar was originally designed to be an extension of the uh, well, actually, it's a club. That's per- perhaps one of the most hilarious things here is the state bar was a a racist um uh club designed for men to exclude women and persons of color and it has then adopted the people that they sought to keep out um in in an effort to augment their status, but it's really nothing more than a club. And you know, I I've got, I just have to tell you guys, I mean, the fact that the state bar is is sitting here or you, or at least your persons are sitting here and acting like they don't know about what um all of these people are reporting is pretty much exhibit A that the state bar is a complete sham. I mean, last meeting, there was this, you know, purported or, you know, feigning ignorance of the suffering. Um when we we know that there are over fifteen thousand complaints submitted and, you know, in excess of eighty percent of them are summarily dismissed, which I I mean, for persons that even figure out what the state bar is, to then put the effort in, um you know, while their lives are being destroyed by attorneys is yet another Herculean effort. And you guys are just throwing those state uh bar complaints away. I mean, uh once again, we let's, tha- that isn't just an allegation. That's supported by overwhelming evidence of, you know, Sherri the Shredder. I mean, when I actually heard about Sherri the Shredder um taking a complaint and, you know, blatantly um stating that she, you know, she was just so emboldened, right? Cause she knows that you guys don't do anything. Um that you would actually cover up her crimes. She might even get a bonus. I mean, you know, I'm I'm sure there's somebody to replace Tom Girardi, so somebody might bonus Sherri the Shredder for taking somebody's, you know, many hundred page document and shredding it. That is a crime. So um, you know, uh the other issues that are, you know, upsetting, you know, there's all of this D E I and you know, diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh we heard from a a a really um hurt mother and I would allege that there is just discrimination per se for uh persons in the probate um or dependency or family law. Over and over, the state bar openly discriminates, reducing persons from, you know, these terrible courts staying saying, oh, they're just super emotional. And so we're not gonna do anything about their claims. When the true underlying problem is the ultimate scumbag attorneys congregate in these courts where there are more innocent persons to take advantage of. Similarly, they place nitwit judges or newly appointed judges also into the probate and or family court and or WIC courts to see who is super corrupt that they can then elevate into criminal and civil court. And then uh when you've really evidenced that you're um morally bankrupt and ethically bankrupt, then you'll likely find your way up to the Court of Appeal or perhaps even to Cal Supreme. Um you know, as it relates to the state bar, I mean, over and over, we're just discussing the fact that there's wasteful spending and the and and corruption. I mean, the public should be shocked at how the state bar is looting federal grants. Um I just became aware of a homelessness grant and a debt reduction um that was given to the state bar or taken in by the state bar on a federal grant grant when in fact, it's this club that is what drives most persons into debt, bankruptcy and, you know, um death oftentimes from depression or just deprivation of human dignity. I mean, there there really is a um a humanitarian crisis here. Uh you know, ultimately, the state bar um cannot fix itself. The system cannot fix itself with more money. The answer is definitely to privatize the corrupt state bar in into pieces and then then place the enterprise into a federal receivership. The corrupt nature um, you know, of the state bar developed by, you know, the Girardi scandal. I mean, it existed for a really long time and it's obviously just too infected. Um you know, I would I would really implore also that Ms. Leah Wilson resign because I saw her texting on her phone while the woman of color uh was describing some of the horrors that she experienced in the court. And it's really, really disturbing that Ms. uh Wilson's face was reflecting the light of her mobile device when a person is um, you know, pleading uh such a horrific um uh, you know, uh matter. So uh, you know, in conclusion, I I think that um the state bar cannot fix itself and hopefully um uh the Department of Justice can look into a maybe a civil uh Rico um investigation and then just dismantle the um state bar. Thank you very much for your time.
I thank you for your comments.
Next we have SV Court Watch.
Yes, good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of a group of seventy women in Silicon Valley who were harmed by a nonprofit by the name of Women SV. This nonprofit is acting as a runner and capper scheme. They are referring high asset divorce cases to a core group of attorneys, namely the Hoover Karpalka Law Firm that sits where Jim Hoover sits on the advisory board. And there has been reporting on this nonprofit for the entire year. There has been absolutely no investigation into the attorneys that are engaged in this conduct, almost as if it's widely accepted. Last Friday, two of the women who were harmed by this runner and capper scheme, one is sixty-two years old and the other one lost custody of a young child, went to record who was going in and out of the Glass House venue in San Jose where the local bar was hosting their party and where the Hoover Karpalka Law Firm was a sponsor. Sherri Diamond was placed at the front of that venue. And she then came out and started to record the women and harass them and try to intimidate them from engaging in what is clearly First Amendment protected activity. Sherri Diamond is a licensed attorney. You have credible evidence inside your own state bar records with Elizabeth Lu that Sherri Diamond is shredding complaints submitted under the local court rule, general rule three B. She is shredding those complaints as an agent for the local bar contracted with the courts. This is unacceptable. It is unacceptable for the state bar to turn a blind eye to the patterns and practices of lawyers using nonprofits posing as providing assistance to women in high asset cases for domestic violence only to strip them of their assets for their own personal profits. That is a runner and capper scheme. When attorneys, personal injury attorneys, were going to the hospital beds of the most vulnerable accident victims, society said that was unacceptable. It is also unacceptable for family law lawyers to prey on people who are involved in a divorce or a probate matter and strip them of their assets and impugn their credibility as well as impair their ment- impugn their credibility as well as impair their mental health because of the legal system. We have allowed these attorneys to do this and the state bar continues to delay complaints about attorneys, not investigate them properly, not assign them to special prosecutors when they should, and further allow these attorneys not only to continue to act with impunity, but to give them awards and elevate them in the legal community as if this is the new norm. If the legal profession wants everyone to believe that they behave as, as wolves of Wall Street, then that is what is happening. Having a holiday party sponsored by family law attorneys at the Glass House in Silicon Valley is as close to the wolf of Wall Street as we can get. It is Tom Giardi's spinoffs, and the state bar is saying that it has done its job and it knows it has not. You must investigate Sherri Diamond and all of the members of the Santa Clara County Bar Association who hosted a holiday party and gave judges a free lunch. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment.
Chair Stallings, we've heard from everyone. However, Farnaz, oh, I'm sorry. Well, Farnaz has raised her hand again, and we have Gabriella Black, who we have not heard from, would like to address the board.
All right, um, we'll go first to Gabriella Black.
Hi there. So I was a victim of the Family Courts of Orange County, and I have since aged out. But I still continue to see the torment that it puts on to my mom and my brothers. And I ask that there, like, be justice sought out for the kids that are suffering other than me and my own family personally. And I would just like to see something get done because kids shouldn't be harmed in this way. And it tormented me for years and it still torments me to this day. Uh, it just, I just wish there could be something done and there can be something done. You just have to have the motivation to do it and I'd love to see you guys do something about that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Black.
We have, uh, Farnaz would like to address the board again.
All right, Ms. Farnaz, uh, because you've already addressed the board, um, it'd be unfair to the other callers if we gave you, um, additional time. So, uh, we invite you to give, uh, further public comments at our next board meeting, which is, um, in January of next year. So thank you for your interest in the work of the state bar. All right, any other, uh, public commenters?
No, we do not have any other additional public commenters.
I just wanted to open it up briefly then to any members of the board, um, who are present, who wish to, uh, make any comments at this point. You don't have to, but just want to give you the opportunity. All right, seeing none, I do want to thank, um, staff and, uh, members of the board. I do not, um, take it lightly that five members of the Board of Trustees, um, are spending their Monday morning with us. So thank you for your, um, your care regarding what's going on in California and hearing directly from members of the public about ways that we can improve our discipline process. Uh, certainly, I know staff has been taking notes and, uh, further inquiries will, uh, be made as appropriate, uh, based upon of the information that was given to us by members of the public. So thank you, uh, all for, um, for participating in this very important function. And with that, I will adjourn this, uh, public hearing. Thank you all and happy holidays.
Thank you. Bye.
Goodbye.